Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled committee of the whole main working session with the city council and staff. We have a full agenda today with a number of appearances, so if we can just be patient, and we'll get through everybody as quickly as we can. Welcome to those who are in the audience and those who are listening at home. Today's date is Tuesday, August 1st, 2023. The time is 9:00 a.m., and we'll turn our agenda over to our city administrator, Britt C. Benes. Britt?
Thank you. The first item of appearance is Matt Reed, S.E.H., our engineer of record, to discuss two items. The first one is review and approve the supplemental agreement professional services with S.E.H. for the 2023 Street Infrastructure Improvement Project and regarding addition of the configuration of traffic signals at A Street South and Second Avenue and Highway 53 and Second Avenue.
Morning, Matt.
Morning. Britt pretty well summed that one up. That was for the, like she said, for the addition of, we talked about it a couple of weeks ago, the modifications for the intersection of the signals and the striping at A Street and Second Avenue, and then also the improvements to the, or the addition of the EVP system or modification of the EVP system to the light at the intersection of Second Avenue and Highway 53. So, we're going to add that in as part of the Chestnut Signal Improvements. If we recall, we discussed that, so that's what this is for, so I can answer any questions you might have.
I just have one question, Matt. Have you had any conversation yet with the state of Minnesota regarding the highway intersection project?
Yes, I talked to Dwayne Hill last Thursday or Friday, and I'm working on getting connected to some other people to talk about it.
Okay, thank you. Are you looking for a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Counsel Motley makes a motion to approve. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counsel Freely. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
And the second item is review and award the bid for the 2023 Street Reconstruction Overlay Project.
All right, yeah, so we did, we opened bids last Friday for that project. That's the one that we had discussed, just doing some of the, some of the streets and trying to get a little bit better surface on them to extend the longevity of them before a full reconstruct can take place, and these are streets that are not on the five-year plan right now, so they were chosen that, that way, and based on feedback from the council and staff. So, we did open bids, and the low bidder was Masabi Vituminus, and they were a little bid of $368,323.30, which was a little bit below the engineer's estimate, so that was good. So, unless anybody has any objections, I would certainly recommend, if we're going to move ahead with the project, to go ahead and award that project to Masabi Vituminus.
Thank you, Matt. And for the general public's information for our application as well, what are those streets that we have selected to, for this $368,323.30 bid?
All right, so we've got 13th Street North, that goes from Sixth Avenue West over to Fourth Avenue, and then we've got 15th Street, 15th Avenue, excuse me, West, that goes from West Chestnut down to, I believe it's 14th Street. Then we've got 17th Street North, from Ninth Avenue, wrapping around to 16th Street. Believe that was, oh, and Third Avenue, right out here, Third Avenue, the block north and south of the intersection of Chestnut Street.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Questions from the council? Counsel Biondich?
Thank you. And I think at the previous meeting, we discussed how that was being paid for, correct?
Matt?
Yeah, that was, Sherry had some, want to help me out there, Britt? She's not here.
Sherry was going to, we were going to direct Sherry to cash on one of our investments, and pay it back with interest over the next few years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Britt. Thank you, Counsel Biondich. Looking for council action and a motion moving forward, so moved to approve by Counsel Freely. Is there support?
Support.
By Counsel Motley? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, and the bid has been awarded to Masabi Vituminus, which will be formally approved at the council meeting next Tuesday in the amount of $368,323.30. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two is Brian Schott from Iron Trail Motors regarding a presentation on donation information with Rock Ridge Youth Hockey.
So, this is a donation information with the Rock Ridge Youth Hockey Association. Welcome, Mr. Schott. Thank you for coming to the council meeting this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, well, this is the first time we've done this, so happy to be here with our choice to donate a car to the Rock Ridge Youth Hockey Association. All proceeds go to them, so I would turn that over to Chris for any questions, but I think it's a great organization, and obviously in supporting the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, they're one of the core users, so spoke with Chris about some ideas to involve other organizations, he's got some ideas on that, so any questions for me, otherwise I'd turn it over to him.
Well, before we do, Mr. Schott, and while I'm not here, this specifics from Mr. Bialki, and so just for the clarification of the general public, could you just give a brief synopsis of the Iron Trail Motors' commitment and donation?
So, part of our agreement was to continue support of the Iron Trail Motors Event Center by giving a car away to a nonprofit organization each year, so I think we've got that for the next several years. First time we've done it, and we're happy to be a part of it, so we're going to donate a 2024 Chevy Trax.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Schott before we move on to Mr. Bialki for a presentation on the, how that's going to work? Seeing none, Ms. Bialki. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schott.
Thank you, Counsel. Chris Bialki, Rock Ridge Youth Hockey Vice President.
Could I, could I introduce you for a minute? I apologize for that. I didn't see the light on from Counsel Biondich. Counsel Biondich, do you have a question? I apologize, so.
I do. Just, just one question. So, when, when this vehicle is donated, is it donated to a different nonprofit organization utilizing that facility every year? Will it be a different group?
Well, that's a year-by-year decision that Iron Trail Motors and the council makes together, so.
Okay.
This is a one-year deal currently. I can't see the future, I, but I don't know why, you know, we wouldn't continue with the main users of the facility, so.
So, the main, the main users that would be utilizing?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
Thank you.
You know.
Thank you, Counsel Biondich. I'm sorry, Mr. Bialki, thank you.
And I'd like to just piggyback on that question, so youth hockey, Rock Ridge Youth Hockey Association has the gaming license, so with that gaming license, I do need an application signed so we can host or raffle the car off on February 13th, the last high school hockey game, and they'll be raffling off the, the car that's donated. The donation will take place on that day, it'll go to whoever wins it on that, on that last event, so I do need approval, city approval on this, so we can submit this to get the permitting, and Todd Crybeck is handling that from our association. Just to piggyback on your question, due to the use of hockey, Rock Ridge Youth Hockey Association has 300 some participants playing, possibly more, so we're the entity that will get the donation, will do the user gambling license, will put it out to the members or whoever wants to buy a ticket, the tickets will be $20 per ticket, and they'll be distributed out amongst the community. We did reach out to the high school Rock Ridge program, the girls and boys high school. We also reached out to Kristy Westerber at the youth, or the skating, figure skating. That city run is a little different, but there's a booster club. What we did is we encouraged them to, we just stated, if you want to participate, let us know, we have some tickets, we have a very nice donation, that has not happened before, no one has given us a car before, so in lieu of that, we wanted to participate with people that use the ice arena to better financial standings or whatever, because we have to pay for ice, you guys need to charge for ice, and it's a good partnership, so with us just being the conduit, we hope, because we are involving these other entities, we get this as a year over, year over, year over, and I'm predicting the future, and I think that would be a good idea to support that, and we feel with business owners getting hit up by a lot of donations and other entities to donate, 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 I feel it, everyone feels it. This is something unique where people from outside the community can come in, they can come from High Falls, they can come in from grandparents, from the Twin Cities, from everywhere else, and they have a chance to win a car for a simple $20 ticket, and we just feel like we want to do a little bit more Rock Ridge Youth Hockey, and we also are, have the pool tabs established as well at the sawmill with our gambling permit, so we're just trying to take some pressure off business owners and continue to support the wonderful things that are happening in Virginia with the new arena, with new development, with what I heard today, new roads, so I thank you all for doing that, and we're just trying to do our part as a good community partner, and with this donation and what we're anticipating raising for it, we really think we can keep our costs down for youth hockey to promote it and to get more membership for our community, because it is a good program, and if we can keep costs down, we're the cheapest game in town in the state, and I'm very proud of that, and I'm very proud of the facility that you allow us to play on, so if there's any questions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bialki. I do have one question. As these funds are raised and the proceeds that are gleaned from that, and you have the participation of Rock Ridge High School, you have the participation from the figure skating program, which they're in the process of developing and establishing a club down the road, the proceeds from this particular donation, this first-time event, would that be distributed amongst all the players involved?
The.
All the funds would be distributed?
Great question. The donations are, they have to flow to Rock Ridge Youth Hockey, because we have the license. If someone chooses to participate with us, the high school, just because we got a little late with permitting and stuff, they already have their fundraisers, so they may not, may not participate this year. Girls, girls, high school hockey, we've invited them, if they choose not to, we're not going to force anyone to sell tickets either, so, and we've talked to Kristy Westerber at the figure skating, saying if you want to participate, we're more than welcome to have you participate, sell tickets, to help raise money for yourself, but we're not forcing anyone, we're kind of the conduit, just the way it works, because they don't have the licenses, but we do want to encourage other people to step up and join in the nice donation that was made, so everyone benefits. We're not trying to hoard it, we're just trying to really bridge high school, girls, and figure skating, because we all want to use the ice, we all want to get along, we want to, all want to play in the sand, and we're just trying to bring the entities together. We think this is a great start.
Thank you, Mr. Bialki. Counsel Biondich?
And I would just like to thank you for taking that on. I know for myself, I didn't quite know how this was going to work from a city angle, so I appreciate that you took that on, and it will benefit those that use that facility, and also thank Iron Trail Motors for the donation.
Thank you, Counsel Biondich. So, we're looking for a motion to approve the issuance of a gambling permit? Is that correct? Or any permit to hold the raffle? Thank you.
Move.
Move to approve by Counsel Freely. Is there support?
Support.
By Counsel Biondich? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bialki. Thank you, Mr. Schott. Very generous. Thank you. And we'll get that over to Pam, and she'll, we'll take care of that, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda was Mary McReynolds and Georgia Lane for a presentation on creation of a housing coalition.
Good morning. Welcome to the committee, the whole meeting. Please state your name for the record, and we look forward to your presentation.
Awesome. Good morning. My name is Georgia Lane. I am with the Arrowhead Area Agency on Aging, which is a division of the Arrowhead Regional Development Commission. Really excited to be here this morning to talk about a topic that I'm passionate about, and also welcome the opportunity, I was here two years ago, I think in 2021, to talk about an Aging Impact Award that the city of Virginia received regarding Parks and Rec, and the work they did around keeping trails clear, adding porta-potties and benches during the pandemic. So, I'm assuming that I can.
Yes.
PowerPoint, wonderful, thank you. All right, so I'm going to talk for a little bit, and then I'm going to hand it over to Mary, who can kind of drill it home to Virginia, but I wanted to provide a little bit of context for you all. So, here's who I am. I am one of seven, I'm representing one of seven area agencies on aging. We work to do a lot of advocacy and fund services through federal and state dollars that focus on home and community-based services. We also work to support the statewide senior linkage line, which is the free 1-800 INFORMATION referral line that keeps older adults connected to services that they need. Fact for you, which is interesting, kind of opens some eyes, is that half of today's five-year-olds will live to be 100, which is really mind-blowing, so the 100-year life is here, and we are not ready. Minnesota, we're not getting any younger. In 2020, the number of people 65 and older surpassed the number of children 18 and under. We just know, looking around at our communities, we are all aging, we know people who are aging, and we want to think about not just the supports and services that are needed, but how do we capitalize on the assets that older adults bring, knowing that people 65 and older are integral community members. So, quick snapshots here, you can see statewide, you know that we are aging, we're aging faster in more rural areas, this is a graphic that shows from 2015 to 2030. My sense is that northern St. Louis County is on par with other northern counties like Itasca and Lake County, so by 2030, we know that 35% or more of people will be 65 and older. You can see here from the 2020 census data that St. Louis County now has more folks 65 and older than people 18 and under, and again, my sense is that northern St. Louis County is more on par with that, close to 30% of folks. So, we want to think about age diversity as a net positive and building longevity-ready communities, so it's not just about thinking about older people, what's good for somebody who's 80 is good for somebody who's eight, so if you think about curb cuts on the sidewalk, it's good for somebody who might be using a wheelchair, also for a parent who is pushing a stroller. So, older adults provide an incredible economic impact. We know that, you know, it's a common myth that people think older people are an economic burden, but actually, in reality, people 50 and older hold most of the wealth. If people 50 and older in the U.S. would add up to be the world's third-largest GDP, so we don't think about aging communities as a liability, but more as an asset, and there's lots of different angles. So, what now? I think two years ago, when I, when I came here, we talked a little bit about the age-friendly community framework, and what's bubbling to the surface now is with a specific lens on housing, but it can really mean a lot of different things, you can take it from a lot of different angles. Talking about, there's so much going on in Virginia, from the library to essential health, doing a walkability study, all of those things can be approached with an age-friendly lens. The library, I met with the folks there, and they're just doing a lot of great work around social inclusion, so Virginia's got so much going for it. So, a real quick note, there is a global network and a national network that's run by AARP called the Age Friendly States and Communities Network. It helps communities plan and prepare to, you know, it could be focusing on one aspect or many aspects. All right, so age-friendly domains, there, since 2019, the state of Minnesota has established a council on Age Friendly Minnesota, and they structure their work under each one of these eight domains. There was about $3 million that was allocated from the state legislature to go out for age-friendly grants, so the first round has gone out, and we were very excited that in the last legislative session, they allocated another $2.9 million. It retains the statewide age-friendly council, but it also goes out to communities. So, currently, there was about 95 grants that were given out to different communities to take on a project, and we're anticipating that around the same amount will come. For instance, Aurora got a grant to work on a pickleball court, so that's a local one, and there's others throughout the state that, that are coming out, so it is really encouraging to see, although I know that's not a tremendous amount, it gets people starting to think, and, and all roads lead to aging, and this is kind of a statewide movement where we're looking at, you know, whatever the work is, how do we incorporate an aging lens? So, age-friendly means it's a roadmap to help make changes in your community, it brings like-minded organizations together, and it's a lens to approach projects. So, a specific focus on housing, before I hand it over to Mary, when I showed those eight domains, housing is one of the eight domains, Mary certainly has a passion, Mary's been involved with a group that we call the Arrowhead Changemakers, which is part of an age-friendly movement, where we're optimizing the skills of older adults to be aging advocates in their community, and so Mary's been part of that group. But, a couple thoughts and stats on housing, we know that most people, probably everyone in here included, want to stay living in their own homes, but our housing stock doesn't allow for that. I just read a statistic that nationally, 40% of households have somebody who needs some type of accessibility, so they could be aging or have some kind of other ability, but our housing stock isn't built to be able to provide for those needs and keep people in their homes. 63% of rural homes were built before 1980, and much of the housing stock dates back to the earliest 20th, to the early 20th century. So, we need to think about, how do we design or modify homes that, that will allow for people to stay in their homes? So, age-friendly housing includes, there's lots of roads that you could go down here, but thinking about a spectrum of affordable options, zoning that ensures adequate supply, home modifications and maintenance, and universal design, and things like creative solutions, so like cohousing or accessory dwelling units. So, when we think about aging housing, people's mind automatically goes to assisted livings and nursing homes, when in reality, only 3% to 5% of people 65 and older will ever live in an assisted living or nursing home, so 95% to 97% of people are going to stay living in their own home and in their community. So, we really want to broaden the aspect, and some of the stuff, as I'll get into, is not really a hard fix, you can talk to people about how do you make your home more age-friendly so that they can stay in their homes? So, we have got a number of tools, we, we're working with AARP, and you guys are going to be getting some of these later in the week, they have some wonderful kind of national toolkits and best practice guidelines. So, talking about missing middle housing, it's a whole body of work that focuses on what does that look like? Townhomes, duplexes, fourplexes, so anything in between, between single-family home to assisted living, there's a lot of steps that could go in between there. Home Fit Guide, this would be a very cheap and easy solution to partner with community partners to raise awareness around how do you keep your home, your own home, more accessible and friendly, so things like throw rugs, right? The number one cause of falls, and when people fall, and then they go into the hospital or nursing home, is because they trip on throw rugs, they don't have adequate lighting. So, these are very kind of proactive, upstream solutions that we want people to start thinking about. This is a great tool that could be distributed, or education and awareness can be done. And with that, here's my contact info, I can take questions right now, or we can hand it over to Mary, and you guys can ask a little bit more after that.
Thank you, Georgia. I have one question, and that is, you know, working in this concept move, where we understand there's a need for senior housing, we're working very diligently to try to accomplish that goal, and just to keep the people in their homes, one of the, one of the areas of concern by some people is that the taxes in the communities are rising so high that the fixed income people in the aging population can't afford their taxes, so as part of this introspect, as you're moving forward, has there been any consideration into talking about how legislation or how you address the high cost of living in these environments for seniors?
Yeah, I don't have a lot of detailed information about that right now, but that's absolutely consideration, because you have to think about longevity if people are living to be my. to be much longer, what's the financial planning that they can do? What state programs, what taxes, you know, are really prohibiting people from there? Mary, I don't know if you have anything more to say about that, but...
Thank you very much. I just wanted to throw that out there for discussion purposes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Mary?
Hi. I'm Mary McReynolds. Most of you all know that anyway. But I am participating in the Arrowhead Changemakers cohort group, and I'm also participating in the Minnesota Housing Institute. So I really want to lend any information, as I'm learning it, to helping with this process. And I'm hoping through both of those networks to focus on housing needs for active seniors. And as Georgia said, that could include new housing, but not necessarily. The aging of places is an important thing as well. And I know here in Virginia, it's also important to have resources to maintain your home that a lot of seniors don't currently have, but there may be funding options out there. So if there's a way I can help with the city or a citizens advisory committee, I'm willing and able to do so.
Thank you very much, Mary. I know that our Planning Department, Jenny Moveney, she's very actively involved in the Housing Partnership Study as well, and is kind of a conduit for the city moving forward. And we certainly are supportive of having senior housing, as in any other kinds of housing in the city of Virginia. The challenge is trying to find it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
I had brought some of my own copies of the AARP resources, so you can pass around and look at them. And then Jenny, if it's okay with you, they can just give them to you, and I'll get them from you on Monday.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Georgia.
Great.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we go to the Green Step Cities Program, if it would be okay with the council, I'd like to bring up the presentation by Rams. And we do have a visitor from Rams here to speak, if you'd like to come up and talk.
Georgia, turn the light on to Green there, please, and please state your name for the record, and welcome to the Committee of the Home Meeting.
Thank you, everybody. Good morning. My name is Paul Peltier, and I'm the newly-hired Executive Director of Rams. I precede the indomitable Steve Georgie and Ida Rukavina. Big shoes to fill, and I keep joking with Steve, he's so fit and trim, it'd be easier if it were bigger pants for me to fill those roles. I am very happy to say that me and my family, my wife and our four kids are moving to Virginia. We're settled in. We finally unloaded the truck yesterday, the final load, and we are so happy to be settled here in the Queen City. I'm an educator by training, a band and choir director. I come from west of Bemidji in the Foston area. I was born in Hibbing, raised in Grand Rapids. My dad worked at Hibbing-Taconite for 32 years, and my mom sold tickets over the phone at Delta Airlines, formerly Northwest, in Chisholm. Like many Rangers, work took me away, and now I'm happy to come back home. And so I'm grateful to speak to you today on behalf of Rams. Many of you know what Rams is and who we are, and we're all of us. We're the whole range, from Grand Rapids all the way up to Ely and Silver Bay, and everywhere in between. And that's exactly where I've been. I've put on 644 miles in the last two weeks, going out and visiting every community that we have a board member in so far, and kind of getting to know the lay of the land, because, you know, we can kind of live in a bubble sometimes. And it's good to know that we all have the range, because it's bigger than any of us, and it comes first. So that's a little bit about my personal story. I wanted to just introduce myself, wanted to open it up for any questions you may have, and just kind of give you an overview. I brought a packet with me of information. Our membership list is growing by the week, it seems. I was over in Itasca County, and Harris is joining, and Blackberry and Swan Lake's already there. So there's a lot of room to grow, but there's also a lot of things to maintain. We've got to protect what we have. So one of the things that I'm going to do is I'm going to share with you some of our legislative wins, just high, super-high level, specifically for the city of Virginia. We're part of the group that kind of works together to advocate for increases in local government aid, of which the city of Virginia received $836,000 additional dollars this year. And that's a pretty nice jump. Okay? It's not going to make everything rosy, but it's certainly going to move it in the right direction. The city of Virginia had a capital investment request for $2 million in public safety, which we were very happy to support and see come through the legislature. And it's incredibly important for us to kind of recognize that Rams works with legislators of all parties, regardless of affiliation, in a nonpartisan manner, to deliver for our neighbors here, because that is our priority. I don't care who you are. I don't care what you believe. I know that the range comes first, and if you're for us, I'm for you. It's really that simple. Next year is going to be a bonding and policy year. We know we had a bonding year this year, kind of making up for lost time. But as the city of Virginia and our associates kind of think about the future, one of the things I want to be in dialogue with you is how Rams can kind of move some issues forward for you. We're in the position where we create conversations with lots of different kinds of communities, all different sizes across the range, so that we can find common ground and maybe move something forward that a single entity couldn't move together. So I was really interested to hear what Ms. Lane, Georgia, said. And when she was speaking, my ears perked up, because our middle daughter, she is, her name is Georgia, so it's nice to know that there's another Georgia in the area, that she's talking about housing. Housing's incredibly hard to come by right now, and it's kind of been that way for a while. And so she talks about the missing middle. What can Rams do to bring communities together in order to have a conversation on housing and move those important issues forward? That's going to be one of the many focuses that we have as Rams. We kind of get to be in all the different pots all at once. And when something is really important, communities are speaking with a voice that, hey, we want to see something happen, and Rams is the one to make it happen and bring it all together. Hopefully, you'll be seeing me a lot. My intention is to have a high public profile in the community. I should be out and about, going to everything. I'm proud to say my kids are going to be enrolled in Rock Ridge Public Schools, and it's very, very exciting to see the new school system that we have put together here on the East End. When you look at all of the things that you have to do as a city, more partners are better than fewer partners. And Rams is really grateful to be a partner with cities of all different kinds and sizes. And if you can open up your packet on the back of the first page, you can see all of our public sector members. We represent the cities, townships, and school districts up and down the range, all throughout the TAA. If you move in farther, you're going to see some of our legislative priorities that we've had. You can peruse that at your leisure. But one of the things that I want to really drive home today is our legislative update from May 31. And there's just a ton of information in here, of which I've only selected a few things that are affecting the city of Virginia, because a lot of the things that happen statewide affect us no matter where we live. So as you kind of take a second and look through that, this is something that our people put together, and that we deliver out to our members, so that they can stay informed on things that are happening statewide. So, hey, maybe you see something happening around the state, and you're like, oh, maybe we should do that. Maybe that looks like an interesting thing to ask a question about. Maybe I should reach out to Paul at Rams and ask him for clarification on that. Or if you talk to your mayor or any of your other fellow city councilors, or your city staff, which are phenomenal resources to you, that we can help connect you with the things you need in order to deliver what you have for your residents. So with that, I'd stand for questions, but appreciate the urgency of time sometimes in a meeting like this. So I'd like to leave my information with you, and I'll stick around and maybe chat with you afterwards. So thank you for having me.
Mr. Peltier, thank you. It was a pleasure meeting you at the Mining and...
Oh, that was a great event. Yeah.
It was a great day. I think we accomplished a lot with the MPCA. We just had some discussion with that.
Oh, yes.
So thank you for your input in that regard. So it was, like I said, it was nice to put a face to the name. So welcome.
Yep. My face, such as it is, is my face, and I'm happy to be here.
Welcome as a new Rams director.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Green Step Cities Program, MPCA presentation on the Green Steps program.
It moved to table until we have more, have better communication with them.
Okay. Moved to table by Counselor Johnson, supported by Mueller.
I'll support.
Counselor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Hearing and, I'm sorry, there's no discussion on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five is approve the resolution for participation in the 2024 St. Louis County Striping Program.
Something we do on an annual basis.
Correct.
And you have that in your packet. Moved by Counselor, Counselor Freely, is there support by Counselor Gondich? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Item number six is review to approve the memorandum of understanding with AFSMI for the Information Technology Systems Coordinator hours of work and classification.
This recommendation comes from personnel.
This actually came from council and Personnel Committee-directed staff to work with AFSMI to create a MOU. This is the MOU that we have created with AFSMI.
Very good. Thank you. Moved to approve, well, moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Gondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and...
If I may, just to point out the highlights of this, it takes the hours worked, or 20, 80 hours in a year. Generally, going to be eight-hour, five, eight-hour days, five days a week. However, there are going to be times where it's going to be more. So this tries to accomplish how we address those hours, exceed the 40 hours a week.
And I would anticipate you'll work that out, because I'm sure there's going to be some on-call issues.
Correct. And then there's also calculation benefits that are based on an hourly wage. So we have to take the salary wage and convert it to an hourly wage, and this addresses how we do that conversion.
Very thin. Thank you very much, Britt. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number seven is review the assignment of tax increment financing and subordination agreement for the Virginia Hospitality LLC Hotel Project. And I just want to give a shout out. We see a Pervit Patel is in the audience today.
Good morning. Thank you for your patience as we move through this agenda. I have no questions. I think it's pretty clear and cut. We need a hotel. We've provided what we needed toward accomplishing that goal and objective. It's going to be a huge boon to our community and to support our inter-mortem events center. So that being said, I'm in support of it, looking for council information, comments, concerns, or a motion.
I'll move the document.
Okay. Counselor Johnson moves to approve. Is there support by Counselor Freely? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Item number eight is approve the transient merchant solicitor license for Matias Tamakivi. I hope that is correct.
That's been removed.
To solicit educational books.
That's been removed from the...
Thank you, Pam. Item number nine is review the proposed amendment to Chapter 6, Section 640, Subdivision B, the City Code of the City of Virginia, entitled Secondhand Goods Dealers. And this is coming from a conversation I've had with some council members regarding the density of the number of secondhand goods store, which includes thrift shops, pawn shops, et cetera, in one location. This is our attempt to try to limit the number in a density area, so that they cannot be, we cannot have every single business in a particular area become a thrift shop or a secondhand goods store.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Counselor Motley.
Thank you. I will move this forward.
Counselor Motley moves the amendment to the ordinance regarding the secondhand dealers. And is there support for that? Support? Looking for support?
I'll support.
Oh. Support by Counselor Paulson. Further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks for your work on this, and thank you for those counselors who brought that to your attention.
Thank you. I do want to just give a highlight. The Planning and Zoning Commission is working on Chapter 11 updates also in conjunction with this. And I don't know if Jenny wants to talk anymore about those updates, but they're very preliminary stages of working on updating that ordinance again as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Jenny, anything?
No. Unfortunately, we did have to put a little bit of a pause this month on those ordinance amendments, just because we have so many variance cases. But we are going to start fast and furious after that to keep those rolling forward. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you. Item number 10 is the cannabis update.
Counselor Motley.
Well, it looks like after the packet we received, I think from Pam, I don't think we'll be needing a special meeting in regards to the marijuana, since it looks like it's already covered in our tobacco ordinance. To me, it looks pretty good. Looks like nothing in the public, on our streets, or in the parks. So I'm pretty happy with this without, I guess, having to have a special meeting. So thank you, Mayor.
Yep. And we want to remember the Minnesota Clean Air Act that was passed in 1970 as part of this process. So thank you for that. Do we need to move anything forward on this tobacco ordinance? Already covered. No changes need to be made. It covers the council. And thanks for sending it out to everybody. Sure clarifies things very well. So thank you. Counselor Motley.
Would we ever post anything on our social media page about this, possibly, so people are aware of what we actually have existing? Okay. Thank you.
Definitely can do that.
We'll do that. Thank you, Counselor Motley. Counselor Gondich.
Thank you. And I'm glad that you brought that up. For the general public to know about this, is this something that should go in the paper? I think right now, everybody feels it's a free-for-all, and they're having fun. But I think, I don't know that the general public realizes that we already have a lot of this covered. And some of the older, our older citizens aren't always on social media. So I think it would be beneficial to get it out there, so it doesn't look like we haven't done anything about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gondich.
Definitely. We'll work up an ad that explains our existing ordinances, and that they've always been in place. It wasn't reactive. It was always there. Just needs to be adhered to.
Thank you. Brian, do you have any comments or clarifications?
Just a couple of comments. Number one, I'd be happy to assist Administrator C. Benison in putting together something for the paper and try and make it succinct. The second thing that I would add is, we're one of the fortunate cities. Virginia has done some good planning, and they've got, we've got good, solid ordinances in place to address some of the immediate concerns. And I don't advocate in any way for a special meeting or an additional meeting, but I would suggest or recommend that we kind of keep our eye on this. There's some things that can develop rather quickly that we may want to keep an eye on as far as just the types of established, well, we're a ways off from dispensary sales in the state of Minnesota. We've got some things that are, that will be coming up, and we may want to just keep our eye toward maybe some zoning amendments and some changes to make sure that we stay ahead of manufacturing facilities and things like that, just to make sure that they're in appropriate, appropriately-zoned areas, and that we kind of watch out for some of the pitfalls that I expect will be upcoming. And as part of that, I'll try and supplement the league materials that came in by keeping an eye on this and bringing to the attention of the council new developments.
Thank you, Brian. And in meeting with the, our lobbying group yesterday afternoon, and again last night, we talked about that, the variety of things, our legislative parties, but the cannabis update. And there may be some things coming down the pike in the next legislative session that's going to add or create some more challenges moving forward. They think, they're hearing that might be some things coming forward. So they'll make sure they keep us and you apprised of what's going on at the legislative as well as we move forward to try to address this issue. So thank you. Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one question, maybe for Brian. Page 57 in our packet, it's the, I would say, the second highlighted paragraph, where it discusses public smoking in public places. Regarding, like, business owners, can a business put a sign? Does a business need a sign, no smoking within a certain amount of feet? Or I'm thinking about specifically Chestnut Street or any business corridor, the plaza area, where there'll be children around. So I'm just wondering if that could be clarified, or if, maybe just to let the general public know if there are options for private business owners.
Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. Absolutely. One of the things that the new cannabis laws provide is protections for folks that don't want, don't want to have the consumption of cannabis around their business or their private places. And so that is, one of the recommendations that I've heard, is that private businesses that prefer not to have cannabis consumed about their premises or immediately adjacent to their premises, just put up appropriate signage. It could be controlled, exactly like tobacco use could be controlled.
Okay. So is there, thank you for that. And then is there some type of a recommended, I mean, I don't know if that could be a VITA thing, that we, if maybe you could make a, like, whatever the legal wording would be, and that possibly then business owners could purchase window clings or what have you, if they, if they're inclined to not want that product in front of their storefront? Thank you, Mayor.
And I'm not saying that this is going to happen in the discussions last night, but there are some rumblings that they might want to tweak that cannabis law to law of smoking. smoking cannabis in public. Right now, you can't smoke it, but you can eat as much as you want. So it's odd, but, so yes, thank you, Counsel Paulson. Okay, anybody else on that matter? Okay, we don't need to vote. We're good to go. Okay, thank you. Anything else under other items?
The last item on the agenda is discuss MAPE contract negotiations, which will be a closed session. So I don't know if anybody else has any other items of concern before we go into a closed session.
Do we have anything else that wants to come under other items of concern before we go into a closed session regarding the MAPE negotiations? Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. We keep talking about PSAs, and it's been tossed around, the ability for the council and maybe some staff members that they want to say something about, welcome to Virginia. When this Counselor Steve Johnson, I take my daughter to Ellicott Park, we go, maybe that's something that we could do if any of us are interested. And I'd just like to let staff know that it has the approval of the council. So I'd make a motion to allow staff, if any of us want to do that, and do that personal welcome to people who are coming in downtown, like we do with Brian's voice at the Iron Trail Motors, I think that would be something that might be fun for, maybe even some of our staff would like to do, why, why they like Virginia, what they do, and then our visitors could hear that. So I'll make that a motion.
Yeah, and I think the motion by Counsel Johnson, support? Support by Counsel Freely. Further discussion? Even maybe getting some comments from the counselors on the website, you know, welcome to Virginia, whatever the case may be as well moving forward. So thank you. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, I'm sorry, Counsel Motley.
Does the city of Virginia support anything on the left side of politics? Mayor?
On the what?
On the left side of politics, let's say nationwide. Does the city of Virginia support anything on the left, talking about Democrat, let's say? I'm just curious. Is the city a non-political, we don't get involved left or right? I just want this...
We are non-political. We, we just stress the issue of a concern for the city. So as a city as a whole, we don't take a political viewpoint, either on the Democratic side or on the Republican side. We maintain a neutral position. That's our policy.
Okay. I just had a few people reach out to me. I just wanted that clarified out loud. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Counsel Motley. Okay. Anything else under other items of concern before we entertain a motion to move to closed session to just make negotiations? Well, we have to vote on that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Okay, anything else before we move into a closed session, look for a motion to do so? Counsel Paulson has another item of concern.
Mayor, I just wanted to...
Counsel Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering if Mr. Patel wanted to say anything.
Oh, yes. Well, thank you, Mr. Patel. Please come forward, and we're excited to have you come forward. Every time you come here, we're making more and more progress moving forward. So welcome to the council meeting.
Thank you, thank you. Sorry, I've been kind of aloof for the few months here, but I just wanted to give you guys all update, and that's why I came down here. I gave Britt and Larry an update, but I wanted to make sure that I hit everybody. I will systematically come and visit everybody singling and have some coffee. But I wanted to let you know that we've made huge progresses. Obviously, the subordination agreement is a stepping stone. You know, in this difficult time, sorry that's taken a little while, and I also apologize to Brian back there, that it's taken us a little while to get to the place we're at. We're hopefully going to start construction at the end of this year, or actually, in this fall/winter timeframe with Lakehead Construction. We had to jump through hoops in order to get our mechanical and electrical back in line. We're still working through that progress, process right now, but all the contracts have been signed. And actually, the modulators are being, the lumber and everything else has been ordered, as you know, from the VCD and as well as the grant. But manufacturing is going to start sometime in January for delivery in August of this next year. So you will see a three-story rise up in a matter of two or three weeks, sometime in August. The delivery, as we're seeing it, Brian, is probably, and I'll send you guys all schedule, Lakehead is putting the construction schedule together. My wish is delivery is in December 31, or on or before that. But most likely, it'll be right around the 15th of January 2025. So then that way, we can get back into it. Once again, sorry about that. We've got, we're going to be hitting a little bit of winter conditions, but I think we can mitigate that because of the delivery of the possibly mods back. If they get that started construction, we may get some mods early part May. So the construction may require us to go through winter conditions in order to make sure our foundations and footings are in place. So I'm hoping to bring a shovel, and everybody come together, and I'm hoping it'll be before frost. But the machinery should be out here fairly quickly. And obviously, the subordination agreement helps out with the bank. So they're still behind us, and they're a great partner, even though in these kind of weird interest rate environment, along with material costs, I think you guys are faced with that as well. So just wanted to give you guys an all update and make sure that you guys are confident that we're confident we're still moving.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Of all the, from my perspective, from all the information we get from the general public, all the telephone calls, the emails, the meeting on the street, whether in a grocery store or wherever, they talk about a lot of issues that the city has, a lot of things we've done well, a lot of the things that we need to do even more. But the...
I know.
The majority of it, when is the hotel coming? So giving us that update is very crucial. And for us to approve that today, we're happy to do that to move your project forward.
Yeah, no, that's great. And on a side note also, just level of commitment that I said about two years ago. We ended up taking on the acquisition of the Armory, I think about four, five, maybe six weeks ago. So it's under our control. And I understand today, I was going to check out the grass, and I understand that the lawn guy didn't transition over, but I think they cut it. So I'll look at that and make sure that that's all taken care of. So you'll see me again when the Armory starts again, so.
And a lot of questions. When is the, what's going to happen with the Army? What's going on there? How is that going to be built? And I just say, stay tuned.
Stay tuned. Stay tuned.
So thank you very much.
Problem. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Patel? Counsel Biondich?
Thank you. Thank you for coming up. I think we've all had those questions of, is this really going to happen? So I'm glad that you came up and informed the public that, yes, it is happening. It takes, it takes time to get these projects rolling. So I appreciate you coming up. Thank you.
No worries. I think you guys are going to be excited. We still have some little bit of value engineering to take care of, depending on where the final numbers come in. And, you know, I'm trying to keep the integrity of what's been designed and built. Right now, there is no cutting back whatsoever. So, but anyways, I'm really excited. And Larry, as we had talked about before in regards to the housing comments, you know, that's still on the radar. So sometime in October, Canada visit. So thank you again. Thank you. I'll see you guys. If you have any questions, I'll be around town. I'm going to go see Eric, and then feel free, and then I'll be probably at Sugar Shack, so if you want to stop by.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any other items of concern before we entertain a motion to go to closed session to discuss MAPE negotiations? Are you looking for that motion?
Move to close the meeting.
By Counsel Johnson to close, supported by Counsel Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. I would ask everybody in the audience, if you please vacate the council chambers, so we can begin our closed session.